We have three more papers. Do you want them opened together?
Yes.
All right, if you would please read Bill 1218, 1219, 1220.
Bill number 1218, An Ordinance Amending and Supplementing the Pittsburgh Code of Ordinances at Title VI Conduct Article I Regulated Actions and Rights by repealing the existing language of Chapter 607 Firearms, Ammunition and Other Weapons in its entirety and replacing it with the new Chapter 607 General Firearms Conduct to update existing laws to meet the public safety needs of the residents. Bill number 1219, Ordinance Amending and Supplementing the Pittsburgh Code of Ordinances at Title VI Conduct Article I Regulated Actions and Rights by adding Chapter 610 Ban on Specified Firearms Accessories, Ammunition and Modifications to place a prohibition on certain firearm accessories, ammunition and modifications. And Bill number 1220, Ordinance Amending and Supplementing the Pittsburgh Code of Ordinances at Title VI Conduct Article I Regulated Actions and Rights by adding Chapter 603 Extreme Risk Protection Orders to provide for appropriate injunctive actions for the preservation of public safety in extreme circumstances.
You have a motion, Ms. Lavelle.
Motion to approve.
Just a second.
I'm going to defer to Councilwoman Strasberg.
Thank you. So, we are, Councilwoman O'Connor and I have been working with our staff over the last several months and are presenting amendments to these three bills today, but are not expecting a vote today. We wanted to present them and make sure that there was ample time for council members to be briefed on them, to digest them, and I'll walk through a little bit of what the changes are today. But wanted to make that clear that we'll be making a motion to hold one week. So, I'll just say a few words right now about each of the bills and so you get a sense of what the changes are. You know, we've listened to a lot of different people over the last several months and a lot of different opinions and voices and responded to what we think the law allows us to do relative to the use of firearms in the city. You know, it's important to act, but it's important to act responsibly. And so, we, in 2018, 1218, have made some changes, essentially creating a new article in city code to address weapons, Article 11, and repealing the existing ordinances on firearms, replacing them with new enforceable provisions. So, the main parts of this bill are, it does provide for a prohibition on the possession and ownership of assault weapons, but that's upon authorization under state law. So, the effective date would be upon passage of state law or action at the Supreme Court. What it does do, a new section, is forbidding the use of assault weapons in public places, something that state law does not prevent cities from doing. Use is not covered in the prohibition on the state level. And it also calls on the General Assembly to give Pittsburgh and other municipalities the power to outlaw possession and ownership of assault weapons. So, we're petitioning the state to take action when they haven't. So, that's 1218. 1219, again prohibits the use, and use is defined in here, the use of armor piercing ammunition, large-capacity magazines, and rapid-fire devices. Again, we believe that while possession and ownership is not allowed to be regulated at the city level, use has not been covered, and that's nothing that's ever been challenged at the state level or in the courts. 1219 also prohibits the ownership of possession of large-capacity magazines, but again, tied to state action on that. And then, 1220, there are significant changes. So, over the course of the last few months, one thing that we became aware of was that that the risks to children are extreme when it comes to firearms in the home. You know, guns in homes pose a clear risk to the safety of children, and when those guns are not stored safely or securely, the risk only increases. So, this bill now includes a provision regarding the prevention of extreme risk to children and holds gun owners accountable for the use of firearms by children when they fail to take simple and yet important measures to prevent guns from falling into young hands. It does not impose penalties on gun owners who safely store their firearms in locked boxes or safes and secures them properly. So, that's one section. Another section of 1220 is the Extreme Risk Protection Order, which was in the bill originally. You know, 22,000 Americans every year, including over 1,000 children and teens, die by firearm suicide. And so, the Extreme Risk Protection Order empowers families and household members and law enforcement officers to go to court to temporarily remove a person's access to firearms before they commit violence or attempt suicide. So, those are, that's just a brief overview, but like I said, there are many different resources available to council members to elaborate on all of that, including Councilwoman O'Connor and I, the outside legal counsel that we've been working with, and I know the Law Department will be setting up individual briefings with each of the council members over the next week or so, coordinating with Council President Kraus. So, I just want to thank, again, Councilwoman O'Connor and Matt Singer in particular from his office for doing so, so much work on this, and I'll leave it at that.
So, we need a motion to amend.
Motion to amend.
That's good. And so, the motion amendment is covering all three bills and these three amendments. And we're in a conversation now on the amendments, starting with Councilwoman Smith, followed by President Kraus.
Thank you. Again, I'm going to abstain today, and I will wait to hear from the Law Department. Eager to hear what they have to say, although we've heard from the DA, and I'd like to also hear from him, that your amendments have now given us the ability to vote on these bills. But it's my understanding that the consent decree says that we cannot vote on any types of bills, whether they're amended or not. And regardless, it still does not cover my major concerns, some of my major concerns, aside from the legalities on voting on these bills, but it does not cover the fact that we are not banning the guns that kill the African-American, mostly in the African-American communities. We're banning the guns that most African-Americans and Latino communities, folks are actually arrested, using, carrying. So, I feel like it's more harming the people that are shot every day in this city. And so, for me, I think that there's not going to be a bill that addresses that. I think that, and you can't legislate every action that needs to take place for us to, sometimes it's just doing a little bit more in education and resources than it is legislating and creating laws. For me, I'll just say that I'm going to abstain today, but I will wait to have further conversation.
President Kraus.
Just briefly, having a chance to review these amendments, it's clear, the amount of work that has gone into them and the efforts that have gone into them, I'm proud to have my name associated with them, and not only will I support the amendments, but I'll advocate strongly for the passage of them. Thank you.
Very much. Ms. Harris.
Again, I don't like guns. I never did, don't have any. And I sure don't like it when people utilize them on a street, in a church, in a synagogue, anywhere. However, I think this would be great if the state passed everything. But we, as council members, don't have the right. I did vote on, what was it, before, something, lost and stolen guns. And I also felt that if something wasn't in someone's hands, then it was up for, to actually get it out of their hands. But the more I talk to the DA, and the more I talk to people at the state and the senate level, is they're the only ones that can have any laws. Now, I don't know how you go and tell people what to do in their own private home. I think everyone that has a gun, it should be, not only have the little lock on it, but it should be stored in one of those steel places where a child can't get the key and somewhere up high in a cupboard or something. So, I agree, something has to be done, but you have to ask the parents to do this. You cannot, we cannot, tell them what to do because we have no rights over guns or ammunition according to the state law. Only the General Assembly can pass something, or the federal government. Which leads to when we ended up having the, what was it, oh, decriminalization of marijuana. And again, right after that was passed, and it's a state law, there was, and it was passed by this council, when it went over to the courts, the court said, hey, only the state can pass the law. So, right now, we have a state representative, and the kid that ended up going over, they got more than a $25 fine, and it was put on his record. Now, we have a state rep that has a law up at the state level, and if that's passed, there will be decriminalization of marijuana. But that's not in this room to be passed. Anything doing with marijuana, other than the medical marijuana, well, not even other because the state has, speaks on all of those issues, just like the county speaks on elections that was passed by this council. We don't have an election bureau. And that's the counties. So, we cannot get into the school board, into state, or the federal government's hands. And I'll be abstaining on this today, too. But it's not that I'm happy with guns. I don't own a gun, and I don't like guns. Thank you.
Go ahead.
Or bow and arrows. When they're trying to kill the deer on the hillside.
Okay, you're done. That's a wrap, Harris, that's a wrap.
How about that? Congress, Congress.
Yes, so first, you know, I had a great deal of respect for Councilwoman O'Connor before, you know, he took this stance, and you too, Erica. You know, I don't know you as well as I do, Corey. But I'll say this, you know, you've been steadfast in it. You know, I know you've taken a lot of heat. I've been next to you many times, you know, so, yeah, I want to congratulate you on that. And I think what Corey said at one of these, when Sam DiMarco and the rest of the gang was here, you know, to me resonates, okay? They were going back and forth, and they said, well, you know, you can't enforce this law. I said, why are you doing it? And, you know, Corey, you said, well, you're here at the table, aren't you? You know, and to me, it's about bringing awareness to it. It really is. And we certainly brought a lot of attention to this, you know, I think in a good way. Because if we don't, you know, the state seems to be in a quagmire, they're not going anywhere with it, doesn't seem to me. So, I really do applaud your effort to every degree as to what you've done. I'm not so sure that I could, you know, stay on the bills when push comes to shove, okay? Next week or whenever it is, or all of the bills, just not, just kind of sorting it out. I did have a scenario I wanted to throw at you in reading over the amendments, okay? The amendment, one of the amendments said, you know, if a minor grabs a handgun that I may have under lock and key to protect herself or himself, say I'm not home, I'm just playing a scenario for you. If I'm not home, my child grabs the gun because somebody's breaking in, okay? In that break-in, she feels like it's self-defense, okay? She goes on and shoots the invader, the intruder. Then, the intruder happens to be a neighbor trying to come in, enter my home, and tell me something. Therefore, it was kind of accidental, you know, so I'm just wondering, I guess, so is the, am I going to be responsible for my child shooting my neighbor by accident? No?
If it's locked responsibly, then you are not responsible for, you're not held to the standard that's set in the law.
Right, but if it's under my bed?
That's a question.
Which I don't have.
That's a good question.
State law, you won't be held responsible anyway.
Okay, okay, so now I look forward, you know, at the very least, you know, the attention you both brought to this is phenomenal. You know, somebody needs to kick the state in the rear end, and, you know, and I'll be the first one on a bus to Harrisburg for you. I absolutely believe in gun control for anybody who, you know, doesn't see that, and it seems like the people we had at this table that were against it, you know, they don't seem to be budging, you know, they want to go by the Constitution and everything else. Well, I firmly believe that if the makers of this Constitution were here today, they'd say, are you out of your mind putting these type of weapons on the streets? I give them a lot, a lot more credit than they do because I think they were smarter than that, so. So, with that, I guess we'll discuss this further next week, but I just wanted to thank you both for your efforts.
Before we start the second round, anyone else on the first round? So, I will say a couple of things briefly, and then we'll start second round. First of all, I want to start where what I've been trying to say, and hopefully will continue to say, is what we all agree on. I believe, as a council, both as a whole and individually, we are against all sorts of gun violence and gun-related violence that ends with homicides, suicides, domestic violence, and mass shootings. All of those events that end in death are horrific. All of them, we are against. When I first came on council, when lost and stolen handguns came, I made the argument that Ms. Harris and Ms. Smith were making. I knew that we were prohibited. I made that argument. I was right in terms of the law, but I was wrong in terms of the policy. There are times when your vote is not a vote of law, it's a vote of conscience. And so, although I have sympathy to your position, because I've had that position before, I've said it, argued it, was right, proven right, but being right on the law sometimes does not make you right on the topic. Our country has had lots of laws that were wrong. The court, you know, over the years, has had to, I mean, that's why the Supreme Court makes new precedent, you know, there are times when it has to change. For me, and I said this to Erica and Corey, first of all, I appreciate them and their power and their strength and courage, but I told them from the beginning, I would be with them, and I'm with them because I think it's right. I think there's times you have to stand up and say enough is enough, and then the courts will do whatever the courts do. The second thing I will say is this. Not only should we do these things on a global level, that is, that we should condemn gun violence in our city on all those fronts, then I hope that we have the same energy to deal every day with the population that is most affected by gun violence. It would be a shame for us to have all this energy and it to be temporal, and when this fades from memory, this mass shooting fades from memory, then this energy and attention to gun violence goes away. Every day, African-American kids are getting shot, either in the city or in this country. And for the most part, that is silence. It's silence on the national level, it's silenced on the state level, it's silence in the city level. We are nationally making a national emergency for a problem of people coming out of the southern border that doesn't exist, and these kids are getting shot every day. And for the most part, we say nothing. For the most part, large amounts of money does not come to solve the problem that we know how to solve. I just hope, I just hope, and I stand with Corey and Erica, and I stand with my friends, I have done that publicly and privately, but I also am asking humbly that you stand with me every day, because almost every day in the city of Pittsburgh, one of these kids is shot, and most of them in the district I represent. I ask that you stand with me, too, that we solve this problem holistically, that all gun violence, whether it be homicide, suicide, domestic violence, mass shootings, all of them are equal, because all these people are equal in the sight of God. They are all equal in importance to our city and to our council, and we're going, each victim, each opportunity, we're going to take to make this different. And I'm sorry, I just, that's my real belief, that's what I think, and I hope that we can agree to all work together to reduce gun violence every day in the city of Pittsburgh, not just when there is one horrific incident, because this problem is every day, not just seasonal. I will decrease, starting with second round, with Councilwoman Smith, then Harris, then Strasberg and Ms. Smith.
Thank you, Reverend, for your comments, and I think I have stood with you many times in trying to find solutions. And Councilwoman Harris and I have voted in the past on gun bills. It's not that we don't want to vote on things, we know the result. We get sued, no result, we give people false pretense and false hope that we're going to do something, that something's going to change this time, and all it really is, is, in my personal opinion, is just a political, a political statement. It's not really yielding results for people every day. And when you see the shootings that are happening every single day, as I said, in this community, and then we have, to me, the audacity to ban the guns that most, disproportionately the arrests disproportionately affect the African-American communities, so disproportionately they will be arrested by this law, if they were ever enforced. But yet, at the same time, we are not banning the guns in which they are shot by, and disproportionately we're not. And so, I mean, you can say and bring in experts and have, you know, really great people working on these bills, the facts are the facts, and if you're not getting them from the Department of Justice or, you know, someplace where they really are documented, they're just, they're just facts misconstrued and data, data which can be construed to say whatever you want it to say. But the fact of the matter is, is I have worked in a lot of the communities where I do see kids shot. I worked at Langley, I worked for Pittsburgh Public Schools, I've worked across the city, and I cannot tell you how many kids I have seen and how many families I've seen suffering, and so many people shot, and yet we're not addressing that. And I get that this was different, this was a tragedy in a place of worship, and everybody should feel safe in their place of worship, but they should also feel safe in their communities every single day, and we're not seeing that. And we do, while we're seeing some decrease in gun violence in the country, and we're seeing some of that in our city, one is too many, you know, just one, even one person shot, one family suffering for needless violence, for needless death, is just too much. And I, I think that the responses are very different from what we see every day than to what happened here. And I get why, because it is a place of worship and a place where you should feel safe, and no matter what type of place of worship, it would not be okay. But at the same time, I think kids should feel safe every day, and I think we've let them down. I think that, you know, I would love to do, if you want to make a statement and you want to, you know, a lot of times, people have made changes, but they've been, they've been people on the local level, they've not used public dollars to make statements, they've not been elected officials that made change, with significant change. Those things were led by real people every day in the community, not by elected officials. So, I mean, there are some many significant changes that happened, but they weren't led by politicians, they were led by everyday people. That's who changes the country, that's who makes real significant differences. We could have simply done this with the will of council without causing any public dollars, without putting the city in any kind of position. And we could have taken the trip to Harrisburg that we said we were going to take back when we passed the lost and stolen, stolen gun piece. We said we were going to go to Harrisburg then, we said we were going to go to Harrisburg for, many other times, that we said we were going to go to Harrisburg, and we have yet to go to Harrisburg. I've been here 10 years, there's not even been one effort to organize a trip to Harrisburg for us to work collectively on issues that we say we care about.
There was.
So, I think if we really cared, we could have maybe done this a long time ago, before the shooting, the tragedy that happened in Squirrel Hill. And, I mean, I don't know that anything could prevent anything, any of this kind of stuff, because I think if you have a propensity to kill, you have a propensity to kill, and I mean, I don't know what makes people do those things and what makes people hate, and I don't understand, I don't know, I don't understand it, but I just know that on our end, we need to do, we need to do more than just throw legislation on the table that's going to end us in a lawsuit, make some statements, and then go away and not be enforced. We need real significant efforts on our part. And I know that the intention is, was well-meaning, and I think that my colleagues were hurting at the time when they put a lot of this in and were trying to respond to a lot of pain that they had and their constituents felt, but I want to say that there are people that are hurting every day in the city, and they don't, they also deserve a response. That's all I'm going to say.
Very much, Ms. Harris.
I'll say my comments when we actually finally go.
Thank you. Thank you very much, Ms. Harris.
I exactly wanted to say the same thing about giving false hope out there, will have people believing that these laws can be utilized when they can't. I would have no problem taking everything that was written by the council members that put this in and turn it into a resolution asking the state to vote on these issues. But they're not ours. When we voted, when we came into office and raised our right hand, it was to also oblige the Constitution of the United States and the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania. And this is one of those times when, again, we, another law that will just sit on the books and bring a bunch of lawsuits to the city, as happened in 1993, when they brought this to the table. The sad part of this is that the people that are getting the guns, that are shooting people, are still going to get the guns. We're still going to have shootings, and it's very sad, because we need more mental health facilities. Those are the types of things that we really need to bring to the forefront. I don't think, if you're, well, maybe in a domestic and things get heated or something like that, but, and it could happen with someone that doesn't have a mental health issue, but you have to, you would have to have a mental health issue to utilize guns in a manner that was used in the synagogue or on the streets of Homewood or in my district. But if the council members put this on a resolution and asked Harrisburg to... But if, if, if the council members put this on a resolution and asked Harrisburg to vote on it, uh, and then we leave it up to the state, I could vote on asking the state to look at this, these three laws that are being put in. But I don't want to give anyone any false hope, um, like we did on a number of other issues in a cost to city, thousands and thousands of dollars in lawsuits, which we shouldn't even be in. Like I said, I don't like guns. You know, I don't have a gun, I don't have a gun in my house, and I wish there was something that we could do, but the only thing we can do is ask Harrisburg. And yes, we did go to Harrisburg once, uh, but, uh, I have no problem taking a trip up to Harrisburg and saying, "Here's resolutions," or pass resolutions, asking the state to deal with a matter which is theirs to vote on. Thank you.
Strasberg.
Thank you. Wow, um, I have a lot to say.
I might never respond.
Um, I'll start with this. Regarding Councilwoman Kail Smith's comments, I agree, we can't only legislate our way out of this. It can't just be these three pieces of legislation and that's it. I have no intention of, you know, working to pass this and washing my hands of the issue. This is going to be a career-long issue for me, and it's not just about these pieces of legislation. I agree that there need to be voluntary measures, I agree that there needs to be, well, that's also why, you know, um, I'm fully supportive of, of Reverend Burgess's and with your support and Councilman Lavelle's support, um, the Stop the Violence Initiative bill, which is also being, um, held and will be voted on the same time as these three bills. Um, you know, we also need to address public health, uh, mental health, we also need to address, um, you know, kind of the voluntary things that we can do in neighborhoods. And I just want to say to you and to Reverend Burgess and to, to all council members, I stand with, I stand with you. I want to be there for you into the future, not just, it's not just about, you know, the events in Squirrel Hill, it's about everyday proximity-related violence, neighborhood violence, and I know for a fact, because I've talked to many, many constituents and heard from them, uh, there's a complicated relationship with the events that happen in Squirrel Hill and, and neighborhood violence, and they want to be there for you, too, however they can. So let's, let's figure out how to do that and to make sure that residents of Squirrel Hill and residents of Shady Side and residents in my district can be there to support and, and to eradicate violence and get to the root causes of the violence as well. It's complicated, but it's not just about these three bills, it's a longer-term issue that we need to focus on, that I'm ready to fight with you and alongside of you on. This is not a political stunt. We really have been working hard, we've gotten legal advice and believe that there is a path forward in the courts, and I don't want to give false hope either, but if we can be successful in even a portion of these moving forward and making its way up through the court system, that will empower other municipalities to try the same thing, then we really have a set of municipalities who can go to Harrisburg together, not just passing our own pieces of legislation, but, you know, banding together to lobby Harrisburg to take further action. One particular bill that is moving in Harrisburg is the Extremers Protection Order introduced by two Republicans in the Senate and the House. That, I don't want to say it's necessarily going to pass this year, but there's a, there's a stronger chance of that type of thing passing than anything else in Harrisburg right now. So that's an opportunity, but I say, let's not just keep it to Harrisburg, we have Philadelphia support, Pittsburgh, we have Philadelphia support and we have, um, support from cities all across the state. If we can galvanize it and plan a lobby day together with all of them, that would be much stronger than just us going. So, maybe midsummer when I'm back, I can, we can, we can pull that together. And then, um, I also wanted to just say that, just reiterate, uh, there, we do see a path forward with this legislation, um, there, a legal path forward. We think that we've responded in a way that actually allows us to do what we're doing. And it's not over with these three pieces of legislation. I'm ready to stand with anyone here on council to, to really address gun violence. Again, for, you know, for my entire career, so, please, let's talk and let's figure something out.
Lavelle.
Thank you. Councilwoman Strasberg just sort of hit on the point that I wanted to mention, which was to Councilwoman Smith's concern that we weren't doing anything to address all those other, all those throughout our city that are impacted in violence, which is absolutely not the case. Uh, we held the bill for one week so that we could pass this all as a, all as a package, but the Stop the Violence Initiative is actually designed to do just that. There is a reason, although one gunshot is too many, one death loss is too many, but there is absolutely a reason why this city is experiencing a 12-year low in terms of our, our homicide rates due to guns, and that is because of the Stop the Violence Initiative, and that is because of the work that we've been doing with the, uh, Building National Trust Initiative, with the Group Violence Intervention Initiative, with ShotSpotter, all the things that Reverend Burgess and others have been working on over the years. This absolutely goes to impact that. So I don't see it as this one piece is being done in isolation, that's one. Two, I think me and Councilwoman Harris have sort of have a fundamental disagreement about what giving hope to people is. I think it, you do not provide hope when elected officials, when government sort of sits by and is unwilling to challenge unjust laws, is unwilling to do all that they can to challenge the status quo. I think you actually give hope to communities when you're willing to say, "Yes, we'll take your tax dollars and we will fight on your behalf because we believe in this that much." So I think we also have sort of a fundamental disagreement there on how that operates. Lastly, I want to thank Councilwoman Strasberg and Councilman O'Connor. I have not read the amendments in detail yet, because I knew we were going to be holding it for one week, but it is my understanding that based on the amendments that they've worked on, they've provided a legal path forward, um, and so I want to thank them for that. Path forward, and I will certainly read the, the language in detail and be able to provide, speak on it more articulately next week. Um, and then lastly, to Councilwoman Smith, at the end of the day, if we pass this and if handguns are the concern, I'd be willing to put my name on the bill with you after we go this route, and let's go ban the handguns, too. I'm going to take that next step and have that fight as well, if that's where we want to go. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Councilwoman, anybody else? Second round before we start third round. No one second round, Councilwoman Smith, third round.
So I would be happy to organize a trip to Harrisburg, um, to talk to the appropriate people to handle these things, and I'd be happy, if you want to put a bill together, let's work on it, Councilman Lavelle. Um, but it would be the same thing as what we're having now, no effect and no enforcement, and we have absolutely no authority, and, again, against the law. So it would be the same thing as these bills, but I will say, I have worked with you on the Stop the Violence thing, initiatives, I have been very supportive on all the initiatives we've done in, in terms of trying to make sure that we're doing, um, all we can to stop the, the shootings in the community, and yes, they have gone down. I don't know if it's as a result to the Stop the Violence, or if it's also, if there's any correlation between the decline in, um, in residency, um, whether there's less people living in the city of Pittsburgh, um, because of, because a lot of people see this as not a place of opportunity for a lot of families. So I don't know what the real reasons are, um, I'd love to delve into that a little bit further and see what the real reasons are, because I also have my own theory that, um, you know, if we're not, we can keep kids from early in the morning till late at night if we're not engaging the families at home and parents and, and guardians, we're sending kids home a lot of times in the, sometimes in very sad dysfunctional, um, situations. And so I think that, and if we're not doing something to include, uh, the folks that they're living with, then we're not really helping kids at all. So, I mean, I think that we need to do more in that area, too. So I think that there's a lot to be said. You can spin this any way you want, you can say whatever you want, you can, but for me, I will have a lot more to say next week, um, and I'll bring some, some statistics to the table as well. Thank you.
Any other conversation? Councilwoman Harris.
Yeah. Uh, the easiest way for us to put a trip together for Harrisburg is to get our lobbyist, and maybe that's what we should do, go over and visit him or have him come over here.
We have a lobbyist.
We do have a lobbyist, yeah. So, um, he had initiated a lot of trips when I was on school board, we used him, and he's with us here to go to, to go to Harrisburg. And we could send up a resolution and get them ready for it with, uh, here's how we feel, um, but it's your job to vote on the bills, not hockers.
Oh, my goodness.
But it is passing another piece of legislation that just gives false hope. And I've been trying to do things. I brought ShotSpotter to the city of Pittsburgh. I put extra cameras, I gave them money to put extra cameras on ShotSpotter in my district. But, uh, it, it's going to go on and, uh, Harrisburg passes, and we're still going to have people running around with guns, shooting up things, uh, because of getting the lost and stolen guns, and the courts have to deal with this and, and maybe have stronger measures for people that are utilizing the guns. Uh, maybe they need to go to adult jail instead of, uh, treating them as a juvenile when it comes to guns. And the same with drugs. I mean, I think the courts need to be stronger on, on drugs. So, and if you know there's guns in houses for children to get their hands on, then call CYF, that's their job, that's, you're getting into the Connie's work now. So, um, I'd be happy to sit down and get the lobbyist over here so we can go to Harrisburg.
Let's do it.
Thank you very much. We have a motion for the amendments first. There's a motion to approve, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed or nay, all three amendments.
Abstain.
Two abstentions, all right? Um, so we have amended the bill, we are now on the original bills. Is there a motion to hold?
Uh, oh, sorry.
Is there more conversation or not? I thought you were.
Hold, yeah.
Is there a motion to hold?
Motion to hold.
Is there a second? All those in favor, signify by saying aye. Opposed or nay, those three bills.
Abstain.
Two, two abstentions on the hold.